We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, March 30, 2023. We have already had our invocation from Pastor JP from Kingdom Builders Ministry at our special call meeting at 5:30, and our pledge allegiance was led by our Mayor Pro Tem, Council Member Terry Miller. So now we'll go into announcements and presentations. We do have a presentation of a resolution of the Georgia State from Representative Kimberly New of the 64th House District to commend the City of Douglasville upon our 148th anniversary, our birthday, to be established for February 25, and it will be annually known as Douglasville Day in the state of Georgia. So please welcome our representative, House of Representatives, Ms. Kimberly New. Let's give her a hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is my honor to present a resolution to this wonderful city that we live in for the 148th anniversary of its birthday. Oh, my goodness. Whereas founded in 1874, the City of Douglasville was officially established on February 25, 1875, by the Georgia General Assembly, beginning the history of one of the most beautiful historical parts of metro Atlanta. The city was originally known as Skint Chestnut, a name derived from a large tree used by Native Americans as a landmark, who would strip the tree of its bark in order to ensure it stood out among other trees. Don't you think our little city sticks out among other cities? I agree. Since its founding, the city has grown from humble beginnings into a wonderful community in which we live, work, raise a family, play, and worship. It is abundantly fitting and proper that the outstanding city be appropriately honored. It is therefore be resolved by the House of Representatives that the members of this body commend the City of Douglasville upon the grand occasion of its 148th anniversary and recognize February 25, 2023, as Douglasville Day. It is further resolved that the Clerk of the House of Representatives is authorized and directed to make appropriate copies of this resolution for everyone here and for me, and I am a seventh-generation Douglas County resident. My grandkids are ninth-generation Douglas County residents, and I am honored to present this resolution to you all today. Thank you. Thank you. Let's give her a hand. Thank you. We're gonna come around and take a photo, and I would just really personally like to thank Representative New for coming in. They had Sunny die last night. She has not slept, so she's been going all day, and she still was gracious enough to come and bring her husband, the big guy, Mr. New, who serves on the Public Safety Board for the state of Georgia. So we appreciate you all coming, and if you don't mind, if you would both come up, and we'd like to take a photo with you. Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
There you go. All right, on the count of three, one, two, three. On the count of three, one, two, three. Then one more, one, two, three. All right, thank you.
I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken next Monday on the items that are discussed this evening. If the business you are here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from Citizens and Delegates section, for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol items, and then we'll get right into the meat of our council meeting. I would ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers, or speak from the audience when you're at the podium. When you come to the podium, we ask that you would please give us your name and address for the record, and there are some speaker forms that are out on the desk. We ask that you please fill those speaker forms out, give those forms to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker to my right in a white blouse, and come to the podium and make your comments, and you'll have five minutes to address myself and council members with anything that is germane to the City of Douglasville. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you please put those in silent mode so they will not be disruptive during the meeting, and this is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and then that person or applicant will come forward, give us your presentation. Myself and council members were possibly asked questions to help us to make our decision for next Monday. Each item, there have 20 minutes for those in favor of the agenda item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. And prior coming to the podium again, give us your name and address for the record to fill out the card, and this is not a debate question-and-answer format, we're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decision on next Monday. And if you have any printed material, please give that to our city clerk, and she will make copies and pass those copies out to myself and council members. So we do have the agenda that is printed above us on the screen, and/or you can get a hard copy outside. So each, we'll go through each agenda committee, and the chairperson will go through those committees, and that's how the council business will be handled this evening. So now we are down. If you're following the agenda, we've taken care of the first four items, and we're on number five, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Council Member Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Council Member Miller. Finance Committee chaired by Council Member Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items to discuss tonight under Finance.
Yes, sir.
Start with item A. Authorize the mayor to sign change order number 13 with Ray Lynn for the Town Green Amphitheater Project for the purposes of the stair tower demolition, event space window modification for the concessions and restroom, window angle support modification for the stage and green room, and upgrade from tempered to laminated glass for the event space handrail system. Mr. Marcus Thompson and Mr. Steve Morrow are here with us. Mr. Thompson, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701, Tred Street. I should have handouts that's related to this change order in front of you all. I have Steve here, Steve Morrow with CPS, Program Manager for the project, and he'll be able to discuss in detail information regarding change order 13.
Mr. Morrow, give us your name and address for the record. I'm sure there will probably be some questions at council, or Madam Mayor may have, and we appreciate you being here with us. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Steve Morrow, 2005 Goldenrod Road, Roswell, Georgia. So through, good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me and allowing me the opportunity to go through this. So in the handout you have, if you were to flip through that first page, there's a summary of each one of the items there and the costs associated with them. On the following pages, I'm sort of just, I'm gonna walk through them. There are some technical issues here. I'll try to just give a brief overview for each one, or if there's any questions or any more technical information you want, I'll be happy to go into that with you. But on the summary page, so we're gonna talk about some demolition, some modifications for a window, and changing the glass and the railing from a tempered to a laminated glass. As well as included in this change order is a credit that's coming back to the city for some reinspection work that was done as a result of work that was found in the field to not be up to, or not to be satisfactory, so it had to be redone and re-inspected, which there was a cost to the contractor who had to credit that back to the city. If you flip to the next page, the stair tower demolition. Roughly speaking, the existing building or the tower that houses or connects the bridge to the existing county building, we are renovating that building. The designs when they were created a few years ago were all done through a process by using the as-built drawings or the drawings that were originally used to build that building, so they're 30-plus years old. And in some cases, the drawings were either not clear, or there were discrepancies with those as-built drawings, so using them as the basis for the design of what needed to be done to the new building would cause conflicts based on the drawings as they were bid. So TSW would take those as-built drawings, create their drawings, and then they were sent out to the contractors to bid on. And when we dig into it and we start demolishing pieces of the building, we find things that we didn't expect. In this particular instance, we were required to do a significant amount of demolition to that existing structure, the stair tower that exists that the bridge connects to. In the process of doing that, we determined, I'll give a perfect example, the original design called for them to demolish part of the top of the roof and then take the roof off the top of the building. Well, Ray Lynn assumed, because we weren't able to see, there was nothing on the as-built drawings that referred to how that roof was constructed, assumed that there was one way of making a roof, but what we found in the instance when we tore the roof off was there was a large concrete subroof that was tied into the four sides of the existing structure. So that had to be cut away and removed, and in the meantime, when we took that out, it destabilized the structure enough where temporary structure needed to be put in place to stabilize it while we continued to do the construction. That work, the crane required to lift the old roof out and to be able to do the additional steel and welding that was required was not anticipated to be done when the bids went out. That's an example, one example of the things that are sort of in this particular item that's on the list. This particular one.
What was the roof being taken off for?
Pardon me?
Why was the roof being removed?
So we are actually creating the third-floor viewing platform, so the roof needed to be taken off to create the new floor at the right height and create new walls that are gonna go up with a railing to have that viewing platform.
Why couldn't that concrete roof be, was it tested for its resistance?
We have a resistance issue, and we also had a height issue that all, so that all was planned to be modified. It just wasn't known to be there when we went in the first time.
Sorry, Dave.
Steve, wasn't that where the elevator is going to be sitting?
So it is, it is in there, so the elevator does need to pass through there to get up to that.
So you'd have to remove that concrete for ceiling?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I also want to point out that this particular one was part of what we would call one of the items that there was a significant amount of disagreement between the architect and the contractor when it initially came in. There was a lot of effort that went into trying to find a happy resolution. The way I described it was that everybody walked away unhappy, because everybody had to give something here, because the drawings may not have been perfect, but Ray Lynn may not have accounted for everything that they should have, or we thought they should have. So we sat down and came up with what we thought was an equitable distribution of the issue, and that's how we came up with the final price that's associated with this one.
Sounds like you had an in-house arbitration between the parties, and you were the head knocker, I guess, on behalf of the city.
That is an accurate description. We put the leadership from both companies in the room, and we asked them to please look at it as fairly as they thought was possible and make the concessions that they thought were appropriate in order for the city to achieve the best possible product in the end, and I think we did that.
And I think this is a testimony as to why we need to have someone of this quality and this company to represent us in doing something, especially when you have what we would call a resto or a remodel from a residential standpoint, from a use that used to be to a use that we now need, so.
I appreciate that very much.
The complexity of the project is not something people could handle.
We'll go to the next one, PCO 53, which was the event space window. So the picture you have in front of you, you'll see a yellow line that goes vertical up and down the side of the building. Originally, again, using the as-built drawings from the left side of the building to that yellow line on the as-built drawing was expected to be a certain distance, and that distance is what was put on the drawings, and we were actually cutting a hole where those two Xs are for a new window to go in there. Well, the distances that were actually verified, once we got in the field, and the size of the window were not matched up, so the hole that was actually cut in there was actually bigger than it needed to be, so we needed to go back and add building back in in order to make the window fit in the space. That yellow line actually is a joint line, which is part of the building that we were supposed to go all the way to, but again, the distances were off based on the as-built drawings, so we had to make the modification to be able to change and allow the window to fit in the space the way that it's supposed to.
So basically, you took too much, they took too much out?
They took too much. That's exactly what they did. But they, as the drawings directed them to do, and it wasn't until later that we understood that it was the wrong, the wrong size. Next one, we've talked about this before, PCO 55, the window angle support, these large windows that are going into the building. The structural engineer predesigns for a certain amount of gap or a certain amount of space or width that is associated with windows. When we get into these one-offs or, you know, these larger openings, some special engineering is required and some additional steel is required in order to make sure that we've supported the oversight, the overhead of the window. These were not originally designed in the contract drawings when they were put out, so these were things that were needed to be done after the drawings were complete, and we knew exactly what we were gonna do with those windows. So that's really what this is about, is just making sure we have the proper support over the top of the window. If you think about a window in your house, you've got what's called a header, or that piece that holds up the wall above it so that it's not pressing on the window, in this case, it's steel instead of wood, and we just had to add that in and do the welds that were associated with it. And then PCO 59, the tempered to laminated. So in this building, one of the beautiful architectural features that you have is that wave railings that are gonna go up the stairs that are aluminum on either top, and then there's a sheet of glass from top to bottom with some LED lights that shine out on the glass for a real, you know, it is, it's a beautiful railing. The original drawings when they went out, it was said to be tempered glass, which I equate temple glass, the side windows in your car that if you hit it with a hammer, they break up into the little pieces. That's originally what was intended to go in those spaces. The railing manufacturer said he could do that, but he highly recommends that we change to a laminated glass feature, which is more like the windshield of your car, or if you hit it with a hammer, it'll just crack, but it all stays together because it's got the laminated or the plastic sheet in between, more like safety glass. Because it's in a public environment, they felt like this was better, that if somebody did hit the side of that glass and it broke, at least it would stay together, and you can just replace it without having the piece of the glass all over. So you'll see there on your sheet, you can see where we, the cost of the laminated glass, and then we're getting the deduct or what we paid for the tempered glass back, and we're just paying for the difference between the two. There isn't a slide for it, but again, the credit that comes back for the additional inspections that were required are also included in this particular change order.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Steve. I know we, you've gone over this information with us previously. So with the glass, does this include the lights? You know, at one time, I think you said earlier, you said there were lights as well in the glass.
There is. None of that changed. We are only talking about the glass panels that are in between each one, so we just changed the type of glass, but all the lights are there, the railing, everything else is the same. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, comments?
Quick question.
Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Maybe just the way you title it says glass handrail. Is that, there's no handrail?
Sorry, yeah, so it's a handrail that has glass in it, probably just the way that it's written. It sounds, yeah, you're right. So it's aluminum, and then each, and each section has a section of glass from the bottom rail to the top rail that'll fill it in.
So make sure I understood that right. Thanks, sir.
Councilwoman Miller has just asked me a question about the first-page change order number 13, just to make sure that the net change is the 197, 389, 18, correct? That is the addition and subtraction of any credits and?
Unless there's a typo, but yes, what's on the changer, if you do the math there, then it's all the positives and negatives to a net.
That's an overview of the entire number 13 change order.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yes.
And I know that we had a rather healthy contingency set aside, but where are we on total contingency dollars that we went through with these change orders?
So from the beginning, we were, I think at about 2.5 is where we started, and we are at around 700 as it sits right now.
Okay.
We have that remaining.
Okay. Okay. Is that pretty much what we anticipated? Is that kind of a healthy place to be in this point in the process?
Firmly believe, based on where we are in the construction and the number of questions and issues are quickly declining to get down to a much smaller, I'll call them nittinoid things that we're finding, but we feel as though right now, most of the large issues that we've had to deal with are done, so I feel like we're in a comfortable position from a contingency perspective.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve, in addition to that, I think, I think we would agree that as you get things out of the ground and you get things uncovered, they're having to be remodeled or restructured for a new use, then you basically, from that point on, then you can basically minimize surprises.
I would agree with you, yes, sir.
Therefore, change orders then become minimal, and we're past that. I mean, we're out of the ground, and we've, with this change order, we basically have the bridge now restructured for the, for the new use, correct?
That is, yes, sir. I would completely agree with your statement. Yes, sir.
One last question.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
And I do empathize with what you're saying, and with the contractor and the architects, because I'm personally dealing with a building with a lot of surprises right now. It was built 20 years ago. How does this affect the, our timeline now? How's our schedule looking?
So as it sits right now, our timeline, so one of the, like, the demolition change order did add about 30 days. We are looking at probably the end of June, beginning of July for the building to be available and open.
That's turning over the event center.
That's turning over the entire, I'm looking at turning over the entire project.
So we're gonna, you're gonna turn over the entire, the contractor's gonna turn it all over, we're not gonna get it piece at a time?
We really can't, because one of the biggest things that happens, even when the buildings are complete, there is so much work that happens in the spaces between the buildings with playgrounds and rock climbing and splash pad and all of that stuff, sort of, the rain, January, February, and part of this month have been absolutely horrendous. It's probably one of the rainiest, I think, winters that we've had in a number of years, and it's, with the amount of civil work or groundwork that needs to be done, it's been very challenging to get that work completed. They're very much taking advantage of the weather that we're having right now to the best of their ability to try to make up some of that time.
It's starting to take shape. I mean, if anybody's been by it lately, you'll see now, you're starting to recognize it as a park now. It's not just mounds of dirt and construction materials flung everywhere. You're actually seeing things.
If the glue lamb or the wood structure for the stage shows up Friday or Monday as it's supposed to, they're expecting to take it from the truck next week and fly it right into place. I would say by the end of next week or the beginning of the following week, you will really see a difference vertically, because you will see the stage start to take place, and I think that'll make a real sort of skyline impact on driving by there, much different than it is right now.
Even just looking at the structure right now, it has an impact. I mean, it's looking nice, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? One thing I'll mention, Steve mentioned to us earlier in a meeting that we had just to go over these, is that these glue lamb beams that he's speaking of, that'll be in place next week, actually are being, were manufactured in Washington State and are being trucked across the country to our location, so the truck time, I'm sure, is a lot, two weeks?
Two days.
Two days. They're in a hurry.
They don't get paid when they're on the truck, right?
They're in a hurry.
They have to get here and get installed, so their drivers are hustling to get them across, so they can get them unloaded.
They're custom, too.
Oh, yes, custom to this job. No other questions or comments? I think that, again, I want to thank staff, and I want to thank Mr. Morrow, I want to thank Mr. Thompson specifically for all the work that was done in the background and in preparation for this, and I know Councilman Davis mentioned to me earlier about how I felt about these change orders, and as I said earlier, anytime you're going in and retrofitting something 40 years old to make it work for a use that it wasn't intended for 40 years ago, I mean, you're gonna have these things, and I appreciate each of you all and your involvement in it. I won't ask for it to be placed on the consent agenda simply because it is a change order and we're not 100% in attendance tonight, so if there are no other questions, we'll move on to item B. Authorize.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Authorize the mayor to sign change order number two with Reeves Young LLC for the Jesse Davis Park Project to add a raceway to the press box and for the addition of playground equipment. Mr. Thompson, can you help us with that, please?
Yes, sir. So the change order before you, there's a combination of two items. First is for Reeves Young to install raceways, basically conduits, PVC material from the Alice Hawthorne Building to the existing press box location. It's basically so there can be access to city fiber in the area near the football and parking lots for citizens, staff to be able to use Wi-Fi, for us to install cameras for safety measures, and also for us to have the opportunity to install future technology as things progress. Secondly, oh, also, I just want to point out, too, that the cost reflects the contractor performing a horizontal directional boring method, and that's basically so that they want to basically minimize road cuts and any disruption to any existing hardscapes. So secondly, the change order includes additions to the proposed playground equipment, which is shown on page 11 on the attachment. The additions ensures that the city is addressing all cognitive functions for children with disabilities. Parts of recreation have been receiving feedback from citizens, so staff would like to basically consider all aspects while we're proposing new playground equipment. Are there any questions or concerns?
So additional playground equipment and additional conduit, raceways, as you all call them, as the industry calls them, for fiber and for internet and Wi-Fi.
Yes, sir.
Into, actually into Jesse Davis, into the football stadium, correct?
Yes, and that, yeah, they are into the press box.
Questions, comments? Anyone? Do you have an idea of where this manufacturer is for the playground equipment? Just curious.
Carrollton.
Carrollton, Georgia? Oh, that's great. Local. Okay. No questions, no comments? Okay. We'll take this up on Monday. We have one more. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Item C, authorize city staff to initiate a formal sealed bid project to receive bids for the purpose of removing the tower located on city-owned property at Club Drive. Mr. Greg Roberts is gonna help us with this. Mr. Roberts, take it over.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Greg Roberts, Public Services Department. It's good to see Mr. Dodson today. Pretty cut and dry, just, we just need to demolish the old tower for the old 911 Center. It's obsolete and out of use, it's disconnected, and I was hoping it would be a little less than it was, but it's gonna be more up in the $100,000 range to remove that, so it needs to go out and bid.
But this is the tower that sits where the, our county coroner is right now, occupying the building that we own. That is the tower in question.
Yes, sir.
Questions, comments? Because of the cost or because of the anticipated cost, we have to put it out to bid.
That's right.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Chance we can get like a two-for-one bargain if we take another tower down with it?
I don't think we got another one to take. I know the one you're referring to, though.
Was it county and city? It can't be a shared cost?
We own it. We bought it with the tower on it.
Oh, we bought it from the county, and now we have to...
We bought it with the tower on it, and it's ours to remove. I believe that was a part of the contract agreement, that we would actually take it down.
Okay.
Okay. Questions, comments?
It'll be interesting to watch them take it down, because that's a tricky demolition project.
Some of us will be very close by when that's being done, won't we?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and thank you all. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask that you would please take Housing and Community Affairs Committee as yours of the vice chair for that committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Housing and Community Affairs has no business tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chairman. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Council Member Samuel Davis.
Madam Mayor, no business tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Council Member Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
Is to consider an amendment to the Personnel Policies and Procedures, Section 5-13, to add a section authorizing night shift premium pay for police department employees on permanent night shift. And Ms. Austin Bing will handle this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tia Austin Bing, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources. This item before you is a recommendation to revise our personnel policies and procedures in our compensation sections to include a paragraph for shift premium pay. If you look at page four of your attachment, starting with number four, we are defining this premium pay as additional pay to a non-exempt police officer and a non-exempt receptionist GCI, GCIC clerk whose shift begins at 5:45 PM and 6:00 PM respectively on a permanent basis. This shift differential recommendation is $1 per hour for night shift premium pay. It also specifies that the chief of police or his designee shall submit a list of employees who are eligible for shift premium pay to the Human Resources Department. Also, in letter C, there is no vested right to this allowance, meaning that should an employee be reassigned to a different shift, then the night shift premium pay will be removed. This is a recruitment and retention strategy for our police department. We did the research in other cities and the results came back that this $1 an hour is somewhere in the middle of what our research returned. You also spoke about this at your fiscal year '24 budget hearings and the cost to add this differential was placed in the police department's budget. We are proposing this to be effective July 1, 2023. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take.
Yes, Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you very much. So if someone comes into work in overtime shift or cover for someone who's out, they won't get this premium pay?
If they are not permanently assigned, no, ma'am.
Okay. I feel like that might make it harder to feel if someone's, if they're shorthanded for a undesirable schedule, but I guess that's not, we're not here in that place at that time. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. They will still receive overtime, you know, their normal one and a half times their rate, but the premium pay will not be assigned unless they are a permanent night shift employee.
Ms. Austin Bing or, or, or chief, one or the other, how many folks does, fits into this category right now approximately?
Approximately 24.
24, okay. All right. Any, any other questions or comments? Because I'd like to place this on the consent agenda if it's all right with everyone. Ms. Austin Bing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor, that is all I had tonight under Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and we thank our Human Resources Director as well, Ms. Austin Bing. We'll move on to item number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight under Planning and Development.
Mm-hmm.
Adopt a resolution to temporarily allow the Planning and Zoning Administrator and/or her designee to authorize the authority to sign final plats as designee of the Community Development Director for final plats, which are approved by the city council for a period not to exceed 60 days, and to temporarily allow the Planning and Zoning Administrator and/or her designee the authority to grant administrative variances as a designee of the Community Development Director for a period not to exceed 60 days. Ms. Hampton and Ms. Jordan are going to help us with that. Ladies?
I'll just, I'll just be quick and turn it over for Ms. Jordan to explain the legal ramifications around this. As you all know, our Community Development Director has been on leave for a period of time and we're not certain when she will be eligible to return. But in the meantime, we do have customer service issues that are tying us up because of the restrictive language and the ordinance. So this is in efforts to, for us to be able to continue to do business while our Community Development Director is on medical leave.
Ms. Jordan?
And just briefly, as a follow-up, both of the items that are listed on the agenda item, the signature issue and the granting of administrative variances, our language and our UDO restricts that to the Community Development Director. And while it would be preferable to do a text amendment to the UDO, that does take a little time because of course it has to go before Planning Commission and then before council as well to be approved, not to mention publishing in the newspaper. So I think by the time we were able to do all that, the customer service issues continue to increase. So this just allows for a temporary solution while we can get together with our Community Development Department and work on those text amendments, which will be coming forth with a number of other text amendments in the next few months.
Question, will there be oversight? Will, the city manager, will you also be reviewing this or will this basically be just the purview of that designee for that temporary time?
Currently, right now, Ms. Marissa Jackson, who's the zoning administrator, has been stepping in. So between myself, Ms. Jordan and Ms. Jackson, we, the three of us have been reviewing what's come before. Ms. Jackson is providing us the technical expertise from community development. Ms. Jordan is reviewing it for legal and I'm looking over it from an overall perspective. So there's three set of eyes looking over that information.
Okay. Thank you. Other question, comment? Anyone? I think this being a temporary situation, I, unless there is some reason not to, I would ask that we place this on the consent agenda and get it, get it done so that we can hopefully improve our customer service in that regard. Okay. Thank you all. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have under Planning and Development tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, our city manager and Ms. Jordan, our attorney Jordan. I will move on then to item number 11, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have one item this evening and that is to authorize the mayor to sign a lighting service agreement with Georgia Power for lighting upgrades at the following locations: East-West Church Street, Church Street and Town Center, East Strickland Street, Old Dallas Highway, and Veterans Memorial Highway. And Mr. Greg Roberts is gonna come talk to us about this.
Great.
So, just to make it as short as I can possibly make something without reading all of it and, and, but if you do have any questions that you don't ask tonight, text me, call me over the weekend. I may not answer you right then, but you know I will get back to you. But basically, this will be a total of 4,000, a little over $4,000 per month or $48,000 annually. And we're currently paying about $4,500 a month. So there's a little bit of a reduction on the per month and per annual basis. Am I making sense there? So, but there is the total expenditure of a little over, I'm gonna say, just a little under $1 million all total to pay for this installation. So what Georgia Power's doing is they're taking the risk on all the lights. So currently, when the lights go out or when they get hit by a vehicle, it's, it's our in-house crews that have to respond to that. So these decorative lights that we have along Church Street and those blocks in between where they exist, those real tall ones on, through the downtown area between like Rose Avenue and Fairburn Road, the green looking poles, they used to be, not green, but they've turned that way. But those poles are about 22, 25 years old by now. And so we can't get parts for them. So we were sort of in a bind already for long term. So if, for example, if somebody hits one of those tall poles on Highway 78, we're gonna have to oddball it. And so, so it's a little bit of a necessity to do it. And some of the underground work that has happened in recent weeks, not WSA, it was not WSA. Most of it was our work for the town green. But we, we hit a lot of underground between downtown and town green. And so that's why we've not been able to get those back working. So it started off trying to get those going to just doing a all-on replacement for Church Street downtown, both East and West Strickland Street and that portion of Dallas Highway from about the intersection of Strickland Street northbound.
Thank you so much. I know we've talked about this several times. Do you guys have questions down here? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Oh, thank you so much, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I have a question and I, I hope this is a yes. You could just say yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. The question is, will everything be done by the 4th of July for the 4th of July parade? I know we're even looking at, we heard from Mr. Thompson and Steve earlier that hopefully the town green will be up and ready by July. But by 4th of July parade, I was just asked today by Ms. Melissa, like, who's gonna be your grand marshal? So.
So the answer's no. Well, and so if you'll.
The answer is no. You said yes already.
I know. That's because I like saying yes. But sometimes, so it will take a little bit of a time. And that was one reason it was important to get this on here. We almost pieced-milled this presentation.
Mm-hmm.
A couple of weeks ago and just approved one section of it. But we decided after some internal discussion and with Georgia Power, it was better to come with all five of these. But when you think in terms of Church Street from Rose Avenue to Fairburn Road.
Mm-hmm.
So the first section is going to be from Rose Avenue to East Courthouse Square at the intersection of Bowden Street.
Right.
That was going to be done first. So with approval tonight, or Monday night, that will give Georgia Power the permission to proceed with getting all the equipment in. And that section will get up and running before the amphitheater. Now, how it might impact the Independence Day parade, we will limit that impact, but they could be working during that time. In fact, I would hope they are working in that time. But, but we can limit the impact because they will only be working on that section down there toward the amphitheater.
The parade goes all the way to, to Rose Avenue and turns on Rose Avenue. But it shouldn't...
Yeah, but Georgia Power will only be working on Church Street from Rose Avenue between Bowden and Rose Avenue.
Okay.
On Church Street, replacing the current decorative lights with new decorative lights.
Okay, so it shouldn't affect anyone walking down the street?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, there, there could be some, I can't say there wouldn't be anything, but we can limit that impact.
Okay. That's all. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, you've given us a plethora of photometric studies, but no pictures of what the actual light standards will look like. Do you have?
About what now?
Nope. You didn't share any pictures of the light standards, of what the new lights will look like.
So, and I had discussed it with a couple of you, they're going to look exactly like the ones at town green, at the amphitheater, if you saw those. They're very similar. The top post part is similar to what's in your, where you live, but the pole itself is a little more similar to the ones, say for example, in the Kensington subdivision that, you know, Georgia Power replaced all of those two or three years ago. But these poles that we're installing here are going to have texture to the pole. So it won't be that smooth pole like this is smooth, like your, your microphone post here is smooth. It'll, it'll have a texture to it. I'm trying to give a good example. These here at the conference center, when you look at those tonight or the next couple of days, those have texture to them.
I always think of, you know, ones, when you say texture, I think of the ones that have like a, an aggregate surface to them.
Yeah.
It's like that?
They're identical to what's out here, except they're gonna be that bronze-black looking color.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll be a brand-new change for downtown, but it'll be, it'll all belong to Georgia Power. They'll be responsible for it. If they get hit, they replace it. If the underground breaks, they replace it. We're not out trying to repair it anymore.
Thank you. Anyone else down there? All right, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that is all that I had this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. And Mr. Roberts, we appreciate you giving us that report. We'll move on then to item number 12, which is Public Relations Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Adopt a resolution pledging to practice and promote civility in the city of Douglasville. And Ms. Jessica will present for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Jessica Withrow, City Manager's Office, 6695 Church Street. In January of this year, the Georgia Municipal Association launched an Embrace Civility Initiative to encourage city leaders to promote civility by seeking common ground, even with those whom they strongly disagree, and to reach a respectful and appropriate path going forward. GMA has encouraged cities to take the civility pledge and adopt a civility resolution. All cities who adopt the resolution will be added to the GMA website as a certified city of civility and will be announced at the annual convention in June. This resolution must be readopted every two years in order to be a part of the Cities of Civility. GMA encourages cities to post a resolution to the civility pledge in a public place and recommends including it on your meeting agenda to remind elected officials, staff, and the public of the city's pledge to civility. Staff has prepared a civility resolution, which is before you, and I also have included the civility pledge for your review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Withrow. I remember this discussion during the January meetings at GMA. And while I would love to, to point out that staff and, and the elected body don't, I mean, we, we behave this way already. But it's wonderful to, to make it official and, and to join the, the role of honor with GMA. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate you bringing this resolution to us and we are proud to join the rest of the cities that have adopted this resolution. And as Mr. Chairman has said, we try to treat others like we want to be treated here in the city of Douglasville with respect for ourselves and our staff. And we appreciate how staff is very respectful as well. So, thank you all so much. We appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no further comment, I would like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday's meeting. Okay. All right, Madam Mayor, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate that. And Ms. Jessica, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll move on then to Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple of items. And item A is considering application for an open container day permit on Friday, April 14, 2023, Friday, also Friday, April 28, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at O'Neill Plaza for music appreciation series. That would be two, two dates, right, Ms. Emily?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Emily Hardaway, Community Outreach Coordinator, 6695 Church Street. This item is for an open container permit for the two upcoming concerts in April. As mentioned, they're Friday, April 14 and Friday, April 20. They'll be out on O'Neill Plaza and the actual concerts will be from 7 to 9, but we're requesting the entertainment district from 6 to 9. And the police department has been notified about this request and it will follow the typical process, which is that our Main Street Coordinator, Tashae Sterling, will pass out wristbands to the downtown restaurants who wish to participate. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So you have someone that's gonna designate the wristbands and.
Yes, sir.
Can you make sure they're different colors for different restaurants?
Well, I think it, I think the wristbands are supposed to be the same color for the eat, for each individual event, I believe. Yes. So we'll, so she'll pass out like all green to all the, to designate us for that evening only.
So will all the restaurants be notified?
Yes, sir. She'll go to all of them and whoever wishes to participate, she'll get them to sign the form and give them the wristbands.
And the form would be a liability form?
I'm sorry?
What kind of form would it be?
It's just a form that says how many wristbands they received, who the person is signing for them, and then that the restaurant will only use plastic cups to serve the drinks.
Okay. Mayor and Council. Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Hardaway, do you know who the, who the entertainment will be that night?
Yes. April 14 is a jazz concert with Joe Alterman. He is a jazz musician in Metro Atlanta. And then the 28th will be Trey Doll and the Jug Time Rag Band, and they are New Orleans Jazz and Blues Band. So April is Jazz Appreciation Month, so we kind of wanted to go with that genre for our April concerts.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman.
Wes? Will folks be bringing chairs like we've done in the past with Windsor wind downs? Is it that type of atmosphere will people bring?
Yes. So since it's out on the plaza, we do encourage. Yes. So since it's out on the plaza, we do encourage, we make sure that they're aware that there's no seating on the plaza, and so you definitely want to bring a lawn chair or camping chair or something so that you can have a seat and enjoy the concert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
I don't have any questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Miller?
No questions.
Councilsman Estes, a jazz man?
Yes, I'm looking forward to it. Looking forward to both of them.
Don't play no New Orleans jazz. No, okay.
Yeah, the second one does.
All right, thank you, Ms. Emily.
Thank you.
And look forward to it. Make sure you get with the chief and so we can have everything
Yes, sir.
on top and ready to roll for those series.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday.
It looks like it's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Emily. Okay, moving right along to item B, hold public hearing to consider the application for alcohol beverage license for the retail package sale of wine and malt beverage at the following establishment. Proposed licensing, LA Capital Mexican Store LLC, DBA LA Capital Supermarket located 6079 Fairbun Road. Proposed agent outlet manager, Abreen Valini, and required fees have been paid into the financial department. Mr. Valini, Ms. Valini, I'm sorry.
Hello, everyone.
Hope I didn't mispronounce it. So will you pronounce your name? Okay, name and address for the record, please.
Sure. 6079 Fairbun Road, Douglasville, 30134.
Okay. Start with the Mayor and Council. You have been requested before we hold our public hearing. Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Valiani, just curious, do you have any experience in serving alcohol or selling packaged wine and malt beverages in the past?
Yes, I do. I have a 15-plus years of experience.
And do you have any experience in our community?
Like, I've been work, like, I've been working the retail stores, like gas stations and liquor store, you know?
Okay. So you are familiar then with the ordinances and the requirements?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming in this evening. Could you talk to us a little bit about your process on how you have your servers check people for their ID and all of that?
We're gonna check, each and every person gonna come in the store, and they have to be 21 years and older. So we're gonna check everybody's IDs regardless of age.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Actually, I'm nervous, you know?
Oh, you're fine.
Anyone else? And this is, this would be supermarket, it's at LA Capital Supermarket or Restaurant?
That's a supermarket.
Supermarket?
Yes.
Okay. And you stated that each one of your employees take the test of how to serve and alcohol?
Yes, we're gonna serve alcohol, and we are planning to put meat and everything too, you know?
And will you register when you ring up alcohol automatically?
We're gonna check each and every person's ID, as I said earlier. So they have to show the ID.
Okay, all right then. Okay, we have to hold a public hearing. And at this time, we're gonna hold a public hearing and see if anyone in the audience want to speak for your application, and we're gonna give them five minutes. And then we're gonna give, anyone in the audience that want to speak against your application, we're gonna give them five minutes. So at this time, we open up the floor for those who come down that want to speak for this application.
No problem. That's the day, that's right.
That's the process we have to take, okay? Vicki, got the time running? Okay. All right. See, no takers. I'll open up the floor for those who want to speak against this application. Since I see no takers, we're gonna close this public hearing. And if you come back on Monday, and I'll give you your results, okay? Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And we'll move on then to the next committee, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
To authorize the mayor to sign the concessions operation agreement with Party of Five ATL LLC for concession sales, services at Jesse Davis Park, Hunter Park, and Fowler Field Park through December 31, 2024. Mr. Bass will handle this.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Chris Bass, 8830 Gurley Road, Parks Recreation Director. We are seeking approval to enter into an agreement with Party of Five LLC to serve as our exclusive concessionaire. We've conducted a RFP through bid net back in January for this service. We did only have one bidder, which is Party of Five, who is also our current concessionaire as well. This will cover all of our concession needs for Hunter Park, for our youth baseball program, Jesse Davis Park, and Fowler Field Park. It will go through December 31, 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Just one quick question for me, then I'll open it up. I'm assuming that y'all have been happy with the job that's been done. They were the only ones that bid, but they've done a good job.
Yes, sir. They've done a great job over the past two years.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Madam Mayor.
A comic, Party of Five, sound like a TV show. Are they from the area?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, here local in Douglasville. You'll see with the addresses on the contract. So a local vendor, and we have great service. So Party of Five is also a concessionaire vendor as well.
Yes, sir. And I see they have their license through the state and all of that, and the city of Douglasville.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Davis?
Chris, in the past, I know you all used to run the Sam's and handle the own concessions. I'm glad that you are taking that out of your hands.
Yeah.
So they've been doing a good job?
Yes, sir. They've been doing a great job since we transitioned out of the food and beverage business. So, yes, sir.
Give you a break from running the Sam's.
That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, sir. Yes, Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see the contract says that the vendor will pay the city 20% of gross sales. Is that fairly standard, or is that in the middle? How does that, I don't know where that falls in the bigger scheme of things.
Yes, sir. That's typically standard with our concessionaire. That's the agreement we have before, 80/20, and that's typically with any locality.
That's comparable to other cities as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, any other comments or questions? The, is this, how often is this contract renewed? Is this a yearly contract? No, so it's, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So it ends in December 2024, so we'll reinstate again, so every two years.
Okay, every two years. And so they've been doing it the last two years or four years?
They've been doing it actually the past four years.
Okay.
So prior to that, we have Williamson Brothers, and also before myself, when I came on it with Williamson Brothers, but then we've had one other since the city has transitioned out of the concessionaire business. So they've had the past two contracts.
Okay, great. All right. Yes, Councilman Davis, back to you.
One more thing, Chris. So will they be handling, well, whenever the park get finished and the Tiger Cubs games, they'll be doing the Tiger Cubs games also?
No, sir. So this is just for our CD programs, so we don't operate Tiger Cubs. So they have, in our country, they have their own concessions.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilman Davis. I hadn't thought of that one. Anybody else? All right. If it's okay with council, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, Mr. Bass. Appreciate it. Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach, and thank you to our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Bass. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Technology Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Protem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business under the Technology Committee at this time?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. If you don't mind, please, if you would take Transportation Committee as you're the vice chair.
Be happy to, Madam Mayor. There is no business under the Transportation Committee at this time as well.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other business to come before council tonight from council members? Thank you. I have just a short list. I hope it's short. We'd like to welcome back Mr. Dotson and Mr. Joel Dotson. We're so very happy to see you. It feels like home now. Let's give him a hand. God is good. I know. We miss you too, Mr. Dotson. So we're happy to have you back. I did talk to our Mr. Jenkins today in IT, and he was talking to me about the blue lights, so we're excited about that. Some emergency, he and the chief were out at Willing Workers Park putting up lights, so we're really excited about that. I know it's going to be a program that people will be able to go to that blue stand and pick up an emergency phone call. So I'm excited about that. Just wanted to update the council. We extend condolences to Mr. Dennis Conley's family as he passed away this week. And we just keep him in our prayers. He was a faithful citizen in the city of Douglasville for many years, running an accounting firm, but he served on our Historic Preservation Commission as our chair and volunteered and just was always around and has been a delight. So we'll keep his family in prayer. This Saturday, we do have an Easter egg hunt. Breakfast with the Easter Bunny is going to be at Hunter Park at 9:00. And then at 10:00, at the Adaptive Field, will be an Easter egg hunt. So we have an Easter egg hunt at 9:00 and then one at 10:00. And I believe that we have one at the Spring Festival for the Police Department. There's also going to be an Easter egg hunt there at 2:00. So we have lots of Easter eggs. And I think Councilman Davis said there was one at Jesse Davis. So kids all around can get some kind of eggs for the weekend. And I wanted to congratulate our Communications Department. We are so very proud of them. They are on the cover of the Chapel Hills News &amp; Views. Ms. Emily, she was ready for her close-up, Mr. DeMille. And on the inside, it talks about all the awards that Douglasville Junior has gotten. And we're just very proud of our city staff and how diligently you all work, and you're being recognized all over the state. And so we just wanted to extend a congratulations to you. And the last congratulations I wanted to extend is to the Alexander Basketball Team. They won the state championship. So that's wonderful that someone from Douglasville, Douglas County, has won the state championship. So those are some of the announcements that I wanted to give for other business.
Can I have a correction?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, not Jesse Davis Park, it's under construction. It would be at the Willing Workers Park.
Okay.
Down at the Willing Workers Park.
Yeah, I know there's one on the 8th of April.
Yes, it'll be at the Willing Workers Park.
Okay.
Or they're scheduled for Jesse Davis. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So this weekend, it'll be at Hunter Park in the Police Department, Easter egg hunts. Okay. All righty. So then we'll move on to staff reports. We do have a staff report for, under Mr. Chairman Chris Watts. If you could make that announcement, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have a staff report regarding proposed art project located at 6840 Church Street, and Ms. Jackson will handle this.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. This is a staff report regarding the proposed art project for 6840 Church Street, better known as the Douglasville Town Green. In August 2020, the Douglasville Mayor and Council adopted the Downtown Douglasville Public Art Master Plan. The mentioned plan is also attached to the items on the agenda. The plan outlines a vision for the public art in the community that will be strategically executed in the downtown core alongside future strategies to extend through the entire community. Strategy four in the plan outlines investment in large-scale public art in new public places, which includes site-specific locations, including the Town Green and O'Neill Plaza. In 2022, a request for qualifications was issued for mural art and artists, and several proposals were received. The Douglasville Public Arts Commission and Selection Committee narrowed down the artists based on contest qualifications and guidelines. These guidelines include overall alignment with the public art ordinance, the responsiveness to the project call, amongst other items. Three artists were chosen based on these guidelines. At the last Public Art Commission meeting, there were a recommendation to use all three finalists for Town Green art at that site. The top-ranked muralist, Woman Head Lifted, is recommended to be placed on the wall that is perpendicular to Church Street, closest to the bridge, which is parallel to the private road being installed at the Douglasville Town Green. The mural will be placed on vinyl wallpaper. The mural will be placed in temporary, in the temporary art category with a lifespan of zero to two years, which is recommended by the Public Art Master Plan. The second artist will be used on the digital signage that will be throughout the Town Green for wayfinding and/or another location dependent upon the finishing material at the locations at the Douglasville Town Green. This will also have a lifespan of zero to two years, which is recommended by the Public Arts Master Plan. The third artist has chosen not to continue due to personal conflicts and scheduling conflicts with art installation that the individual previously had scheduled prior to this. The project will be funded by Hotel Motel Tax, and as outlined in this plan, art is a form of tourism and assists with injecting art into everyday built environment. The installation of both pieces will be based upon the Town Green opening and availability of supplies. That concludes my report regarding the proposed art project, and I can entertain any questions you all may have.
Any comments or questions? This is, this could be a big deal, really, dress it up. I didn't ask this earlier when we met, Ms. Jackson, the art, has it already been determined what she's going to paint?
Yes. So on your agenda, the attached items, you will see two, well, both arts. So one is the Woman Head Lifted, which I believe is page two, and the other should be page four, my apologies. And then the other will be the art entitled Flowers by Chelsea Hart, which is page eight.
That's right. We did talk about flowers. Now I remember. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can you, can you have, Ms. Jackson, would you tell us again where these will be located exactly in layman's terms?
So if you are turning on Church Street from Rose Avenue, there is a wall that, it's the first wall that you will see that will be facing, if you're driving on Church Street. So that is the wall that the Woman Head Lifted will be located on. And then for the second mural, well, the second art, which is the Flowers by Chelsea Hart, that will be placed on digital signage, or it will be placed on, the Public Arts Commission recommended it be placed on the backside of the amphitheater. But that material, we're unsure where that material will be, so we don't know whether we'll be able to place vinyl wallpaper on the back of that. So we have to wait until that is complete, and then we'll decide whether it can be placed based on the material that the actual amphitheater stage is built from.
So it appears then that the woman's head would be on the column or the tower for the walk across on the right side?
I have a picture I can pass out to you all.
That's what it appeared. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Yes, Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You said these are both, well, if the one's digital, it's obviously temporary, no matter what. The woman's head is also going to be temporary. What was the reasoning behind only having that? I mean, that's a lot of, that's a big mural and a lot of trouble to go through to make it. Why is it only going to be temporary?
Well, temporary under the art standards is zero to two years, and a mural also falls under zero to two years. It's dependent upon how long the city or the Public Arts Commission will want that. Just so you all know, the guidelines to remove public art that goes through the Public Art Commission as well as the plan, it does have to come before the Public Arts Commission and the Douglasville City Council prior to it being removed.
Thank you.
Did that, did that answer your question, Mr.?
More or less.
More or less, okay.
I guess the bottom line is they can't, it doesn't expire at two years and somebody goes and takes it down. It will stay up there until we decide to take it down.
Plus, plus it's. It's being put on?
Yes. There's utility, gas lines, and gas meters in that area as well. So ensure that that doesn't create any, let's see, I'm not the city engineer, but just to ensure that it doesn't mess with the utilities and the meters that are in that area. And I'll send this picture out to Mayor and Council because you can better see exactly where it'd be as it relates to the gas meters. It's better to have it temporary with the vinyl wallpaper than actually having someone come and paint nearby, near that, well, the gas meter and the water meters in that area.
And if I may interject, temporary wallpaper sounds a little bit misleading. It's not like it's, you know, a poster that's tacked up. I mean, it is, it is attached to the surface. You can't tell that it's not actually painted on the surface.
It won't look like a banner.
No, no.
No, no. It will look like it's painted on the surface itself.
Yes, Madam Mayor? You had your hand up, or you did?
Yes, sir. Just quickly.
And then we'll go to, we'll go to Councilmember Davis right after you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the other thing for Ms. Jackson, I think we had such a great interest as well for entries that the commission may have decided, from my understanding, to have it two to five year, I mean, for zero to two years, and maybe to rotate to give others an opportunity to show their art as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Councilmember Davis?
Well, the Swift signs and the Coca-Cola signs all around the city, will they be redone? Could be, look like they?
I believe the Coca-Cola signs, they may be from a private artist, so if they want to redo those, they would have to come before Mayor and Council, much like Ms. Emily Leitner for the Public, well, the Culture Arts Council. When she wants to install, she has to come before council. So any private artists or private organization that wants to redo their mural, they would have to come before council and seek permission.
Because they're going to have new art, and then they look like they just there, so...
But we can reach out to those artists. I can check with Ms. Emily. She should probably have the artists in the Culture Arts Council.
Break buildings, you know, get the art already, the Swifts, so, okay.
Any, any other comments? All right. And it's my understanding that we do not have to vote on this. This is, this is a done deal, so it's no, it won't be an agenda item on Monday.
No, that's correct. It's just a staff report to make sure Mayor and Council knows the next steps regarding the art at the Town Green.
Okay, thank you. There are no further questions. That's all I had tonight under staff reports. Appreciate Ms. Jackson's presentation. Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Coach. We appreciate that, and thank you to our Assistant City Manager. We'll move on to updates from city staff. Happy to say, Mr. Dotson, our city attorney?
Still no bid.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I have no business this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our Chief of Police, Chief Gary Sparks?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, we have a twenty-seven mile bicycle ride Saturday morning, eight o'clock. So you have a bicycle, eighteen years older?
How many miles?
Twenty-seven.
Phew. Can I jump out after two? No.
No, you gotta finish.